...going up in some areas, but I'm reducing the budget by that amount. Other areas that I looked at, I've really been trying to pare down contingencies in some areas. People, but if I look at the past couple of years and I'm not seeing any amusing in or any risk, I'm paring some things down, technology, utilities. And of course, we're aware that the cost for this stadium tractor servicing is 65,000 less than what was originally put into the budget. So summarizing for this year, I didn't mention this earlier, but 15,000, we had a couple in transfer tax more. We had a couple, two large commercial properties sell last month, sell last month. And this is the reduction in expense. 1516, with some tweaking of social security retirement and Medicaid access, I reported 88,000 more in revenue. 708,000 reduction in expense from the 70.4 million expense that we looked at at the last meeting. So this year, we're looking at 200,000 excess of revenue over expense. This is our fund balance. Next year, this is this year, this is next year. The, with no tax increase, the deficit or the shortfall is 1.5 million. These are the components of the fund balance, commitments, net assignments, and the unassigned fund balance. So we're right at the 8% mark where that's our limit of having an unassigned fund balance. And that's with no tax increase. Again, the difference here, and here's the 1.5 million shortfall, how the components change from year to year. Any questions so far? General fund revenue. It's increasing 1 million, no tax increase. The main driver here is retirement reimbursement. Federal source, even though I had mentioned that we're getting 80,000 more additional in access, our federal Title I was actually going down, so that's why it's showing.
So, Suzanne, can you back, why are local sources or revenue are going down?
Well, a couple of things. We use 97% collection rate for our real estate. We've been coming in around 97.3, 97.5, and that could happen next year. So 97%, it's 90,000 this year. I'm still using 375,000 for next year because, you know, the one-time sales caused that increase. And earned income tax as well, I think, next year's a little bit less than this year. So those things add up to, you know, making it a net decrease. But it could go the other way. Not that it moves and downs, but it could go the other way. Expense, here's the current year, 1415, 1516, and this is the increase in expense. About 2.8 million or 4.2%. And again, as I've pointed out so many times, the increases in our employee wage and benefit margins. Summarizing the major cost drivers.
Do you, I mean, I guess, are we going to be settling the Alwatin Creek business that this current year or, you know, the 1516 school year?
Litigation?
Yeah, litigation. What is the law on that? Does he think we will be settled by the end of the year?
I don't know that at this point I can even find an update on that.
If you asked him that question, he would say, well, it's, that's a likely scenario that it would be. But, you know, he would never guarantee that, so.
I guess we are going to report this, are we going to report this?
That was the latest.
But I think it should be pointed at, that has no impact on the general fund.
On what?
It has no impact on the general fund.
Oh, doesn't it? The general fund?
No, that's.
Well, where would the money go then?
It would go back into the 2000, excuse me, the Alwatin Creek capital project fund.
Oh, it's the capital fund.
And it would be used for, it could be used for either smaller capital projects, you know, toward the transportation center if that moves ahead, or toward the debt service specifically on the issues that funded that construction.
Other than that, would that be to reduce our debt?
Or use for.
Or for.
A few options there.
Major redoing on the Alwatin Creek debt.
Well, it could be any, it could be other capital projects.
Any other capital projects. The way the resolution, resolutions are written when they issue the debt is, it's not specific purpose, but it's broad enough that it could be for other capital projects. Contract wage increases, including the staff requests, our healthcare increased 3%, 3%. This is the rental on the three more grades getting the Chromebooks. These are other areas of increase, but other costs have bonded. We brought them down from 1415, the current year, to next year. Speech, I mentioned, private tuition, and technology equipment purchases. These are the staff additions that are in the budget. We've discussed, we discussed these several times. This is the transition program that they want to start at the high school in lieu of sending our students to DCIU's program. And this is where we're adding the speech therapist to replace contracted services. So when you add those numbers, it's 525,000. But if you look at what we saved in, I've reduced the contracted service by 142. Teacher retirement impact, 335,000. Support retirement slash turnover, 48,000. So basically, with what we're saving in certain areas, using, offsetting what has been proposed and is still in the budget.
How much, Medicaid is traditionally a very poor payer, so how much of those positions would be funded by Medicaid?
Well, what, when I said the cost settlement was 175,000, this year, we're drawing down 90,000 to pay toward the assistant supervisor and some of the clerical staff that work on that. So if we have 175,000 or 80-some additional thousand, we could, we have to provide PD with how we're going to use these funds. Legitimate uses of those funds are new staff, specialized staff, which the teacher would be, as well as the parent professionals, or very, an array of, you know, supplies.
About the 100 and.
160,000.
60,000, what?
There would be about 80,000 available from that new money to go toward that. The PISers, again, just to, you know, remind everyone where we're at, we're at 25.84. These are the net increases each year. You know, we'll start leveling out in 1920. Right now, we have committed and assigned this amount to go toward that. So just to illustrate where we were in '08, '09, and then this levels out for many, many years. I think in 2036 is when it may start to drop off.
Well, is that half of what we pay?
This is the full amount.
Yeah, but we get half of that.
And we get half back. So really, it's, is 12 net contribution rate. The capital maintenance improvement projects that are in the general fund is at 637,000. And that includes the adjustment for the track. Just to remind you, these are what, this is what we looked at last meeting. Now, with all the changes that I've made in revenue and expense, these really are not options. The way we've designed the components, commitments, assignments, et cetera. So this has us at the limit of 8%. You cannot adopt a budget where your unassigned fund balance is more than 8% of the expense. Again, to show you the assignments of fund balance, we've discussed these before. And this is the commitment. I'm not recommending any change in commitment for 1516, basically because we're still facing, you know, we have capital needs, we have the PISers challenged, and these are the commitments. I was really interested myself in seeing where we've been over the past 15 years in terms of millage increase. This is where we had tremendous enrollment growth. This is kind of where it leveled off. This is where Act One came into play, where we were, had the exceptions and were limited by your tax increase. And more recently, the tax increases have been, you know, at a lesser amount. Of course, the millage is larger. So at this point in time, based on how we have the budget built, it's showing no tax increase. And to go to something which. This was prepared back in May, and when all school districts were looking at what they could possibly, what options in terms of millage increase, and remember, we were looking at .35, .25, 0. But just to give you some background on what other school districts are doing, this is in May, and I'm sure some of them have changed. Our number was zero, of zero increases, and all the way down to the highest increase. And putting it in terms of. Low to high, for 3125, we're still at the third, depending on how they, how people, what they do this month in terms of the increase.
Brilliant, that's, that's using the projections from May that they had, this is where we're at now.
This is May, this is May.
Yeah.
I do not have the, I don't know what they've done, but just to give you perspective of what's going on in the county. And again, just repeating this to show you really what the average cost, you know, level is. Property tax relief or allocation, 1,350, 360,000. We have 7,087 properties. The exclusion amount that I've estimated is 6,114 of assessed value. This millage, the reduction in property tax will be 191.05.
When they have that home select, does the state give us that money then?
The state provides us with the money, two payments per year.
Yeah. So how, is it, we have 7,000 some properties, would you say?
Yes.
And how many properties do we have altogether? Like, I mean, how many state, how many properties do we have?
How many parcels, I, you know, over 10,000?
So then it would be who was, if we could get those people that have their homestead act, to get the homestead act, right? Because they would, they would be paying less taxes, and the state would be kicking it, kicking it.
Well, we, this amount really hasn't changed since it started. So it would be, if you have more properties, it's spread out over more eligible properties. So the amount, unless the state would increase, but this, they determine what's available in the gambling funds, and that's what we can get it. It hasn't increased at all.
No, but I mean, what I'm saying is, you have to apply for that home select.
Right.
And some people don't.
That's.
Because I know my neighbor, he had moved in three years ago, and, and I said, well, do you, don't you have, you know, don't you have the home select? He said, no. I said, well, do it. I said, that'll be less type. So then he said, I got the home select now, he said, I got the less taxes, so let's do it, there you go.
Okay.
But what I'm saying is, we can somehow, you know, people, I mean.
We do put something in the newsletter about it.
Well, maybe we could add a little bit more. You know, there were X number of properties that could use the home select, and they're not, probably 2,000 maybe. You know, and those 2,000 people, they're saying, oh, my taxes are going up, and yet they're paying the full vote.
Yeah, and I can let you know what the residential or who the eligible, you know, because it's a home stuff. Can't be a rental.
And I think that would help too, with them, you know, at least, you know, I don't know if they should send a letter, ask, telling them, you know, this is available here, what you've got to do is get your state legislature.
Initially, we did, when we had to.
Well, I guess that was years ago, though.
Yeah, plus.
Because seriously, he didn't know about it, you know? He had just moved in, that's first home he bought, and I said, well, do you have that? He said, no. I said, well, you know, get it. Don't even have to worry about, you know, you know.
Well, you know, it could come from different.
Think about, the state should, you know, they're wanting to do it.
So I'll be adding resolutions to the June 16 agenda, which really, you know, the true, the general fund budget, the capita, set the millage, approve the home state exclusion amount, and then, you know, reapprove the fund balance commitments. Are there any questions?
Now, did you put any additional money in from the state?
I'm glad you brought that up, yes. There's 223,000 in revenue in basic ed and special education, which is about 25% of what government, his budget allocation for this district. So 223,000. So if we don't get that, then it would come out of fund balance.
But if we get more, then.
It would be, it would be wonderful.
Yeah, well, let's, let's put some pressure on our legislators to, you know, put up some more bucks for public education.
Any questions, Ray?
Well, let me just make a couple of comments, observations, and hopefully a plea to taxpayers to support me at this particular time. Bob had given me a call earlier this year, late last year, to be chair of the finance committee, and I accepted it. And the reason was is that I wanted to get involved with the budget process that I think was being managed incorrectly. Not illegally, just incorrectly. And I can tell you that after five months of the budget process, I had little impact, to no impact, on changes. I know the very first meeting I sat, I know Bev was there, sitting next to me, and Bob was there, sitting one down from Bev. And I said to Ann, what I wanted to do for the budget this year was I wanted to show apples-to-apples comparison of what the budget was this year and what we were projecting for next year. There were too many moving pieces in our budget that confounded the issue and I think allowed the board to vote for tax increases. Well, I know Ann, at our last meeting, made a comment, it's on record, it's on tape, where she said, basically, nobody does it that way. I disagree. I completely disagree. I emphatically disagree. I think we're one of the few organizations that does the budget the way that we do. And what I mean by that is, I think that we look at what we want from an expense standpoint, and then we, and we throw everything in there. We don't vote on it necessarily as a board individually. We throw it in there, and then we go to the taxpayers to make up the difference. I think what we ought to do, and I still contend, we ought to take what we get without any changes and see what we can spend. I don't think any other organization does it the way that we do it. And I know, again, this elicited the response last year when I said about the socialist of liar, 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 or lies, lies, lies. I still haven't found anybody who's been able to prove that. We do it in a way that I don't think anyone else does it, and I don't think makes much sense. Now, in addition, the problem I have with this budget is, and I've explicitly said this in a couple of meetings, I wanted to talk individually about the new employees. We put them in, and we, we vote on them as if, we don't talk about them. I know that there's some discussions, I know that they're out there, but they're put into the budget. See, what ends up happening is, when we put those new employees in the budget, there's 500-some thousand dollars that we increase next year's expenses. And that's a discretionary item on our part. Number two, I disagree with Ann. Again, this is, this is, there can be accounting disagreements, but I don't think all of these reserves that we account for are necessary. I realize that we want to be conservative, but I think when we take discretionary reserves and put them in as an expense, I think we do, again, the taxpayers are disturbed. And then finally, I'll go to my grave, running capital projects through the general fund. Between discretionary, new employees that are discretionary, and capital projects, we have jacked up the expenses in our budget by between $1 and $2 million. Okay. I think we needed to have an apples-to-apples comparison, but let's just say that you disagree with me even there. I think the most interesting thing to come out of Ann's report is that we are now running right up against the legal limit, even with the losses that we have for unassigned fund balance. And that doesn't include what David or Jim or anyone else had asked about the capital budgets or PACT about the capital budgets. We're not even counting the six or eight million dollars that we have there, or the 1 million dollars that we have in food service. So my recommendation is, and I listened to our township representative or supervisor, or supervisor designate, make a presentation and say, one of the hurdles that we have as a township is high taxes. I can't get away from giant meetings, or Redner's meetings, or Wawa meetings, where people just jump on me about the taxes. Today, I went and got a haircut, and the people ended up having to, the person cutting the hair had to stop the discussion because they said, he's on the board, you've got to stop. It doesn't stop. I think we, this year, need to make a statement to taxpayers that at the absolute maximum, we hold taxes steady. But I think, given all the information and what I suggested about some of the new expenses in the, in the proposed budget, this would be a perfect opportunity to lower taxes going into next year.
Tim, there's a couple of things that you said that I disagree with, and I'm looking at it from, obviously, not my point of view as superintendent, not your point of view with your financial knowledge. First of all, you mentioned, take what you know, what you're going to get, rather than, you know, take what you're, what you're going to get, the amount of revenue you're going to get. We don't even know the amount of revenue that you're going to get. We play this game every single year, trying to guess, you know, what are the political wins going to do this year? So that's problem number one. Number two, when you talk about, you know, we just put in these people, discretionary people. Number one, they're not always discretionary people. These are very often positions that are created to fulfill a mandate that is given to us, and it's not discretionary at all. That's another thing. And it also totally, you know, doesn't respect at all the process that we've used internally as an administrative team. And the principals can attest to this. We sit here hour after hour after hour, going over and over every one of those requests that each supervisor or principal makes, deciding, can we get around this any way we possibly can? Even to the point, you made a comment yourself in the past, are we really arguing about a $10,000 library aid or something like that? Yes, we really do. We argue about everything. Can we possibly do without this position? It's not like we just put them in and say, okay, they're in, so someone's got to pay for them. And I really think that the way you make your remarks really makes it appear at a public meeting as though we had absolutely no regard for, you know, for saving money or for, you know, having an open conversation about this. We have conversations all the time about it. If the board would like to be involved, we are more than happy to involve the board in these conversations. But oftentimes, these are based on instructional needs or mandates to be fulfilled. You know, the keystone exams, for example. I mean, that, you know, the project-based assessments, all of those things that we have to do in order to graduate our kids, demand that we have to have people in place to do it. I mean, that's just one example, but there are many others. So I understand your frustration with what seems to you to be a very different process than what you would imagine that would be the best fiscal way to do it. But, you know, we live within the constraints of a public school budget, and I'm a little bit confused when you say that nobody else does it this way. I don't know if you're talking about in the public school arena, or you're talking about outside of public education. Because I can assure you, I have worked in four districts, and I've seen little differences in the way everybody does things, but it basically boils down to the same thing. You know, we, we have control of, I wish I knew the exact percentage of our expenses we really have control over. Because so many of them are pushed down to us by, you know, people who have no idea of how to, you know, how their decisions are affecting us and ultimately, the taxpayer. And, you know, we're, then our feet are held to the fire when all we're trying to do is live within the law and provide the best education for our kids.
I think too, another, you know, I don't know, maybe we're talking about the private sector. But, you know, we don't have any control of the type of children that come to our district. And depending on their needs, I mean, you, you and I both see some of the special needs students that we have, and the cost that that is for the taxpayer. We, we can't, we cannot provide that, that service to, we must provide that service. We don't have an option. And the costs are insuperant. I mean, they're amazing as compared to the regular education students. And yet, we are, we are bound to do that, or otherwise, we can get sued by the parents for not providing a proper placement for their child. And, and, I mean, I, I think I had asked Ann to give me a pie chart as to, you know, what was the cost from previous years to this year as far as special ed class? Because I know they are increasingly exorbitant, and I, you know, I'm very upset by that. Yet, we have to pay, pay the cost. You look at some of these ones for the summer placement, I mean, it's outrageous amount of money for a month or a month and a half for, for these children, $45,000. I mean, it, that's not anywhere near what we, what our, our special ed, special, I mean, our regular ed costs are here in the district. What, what is the regular ed cost for a first student in our district here, about? 10,000?
1,000, some hundred.
Yeah. And, and special ed students are like double that, aren't they? At least.
At least double that.
Yeah. Because you have to have smaller classes, you have to have an aide with some of these children, sometimes it's one-on-one. It's not, it's not that we want to do that, it's that we must do that. That is the law. And these lawmakers that make the laws, they do not provide the monies, they push it down to the local level. And the state hasn't been providing the money, and the federal government, which many of those mandates come from, haven't been providing the money. And that's the problem.
I don't think that was the point in Dr. Moore's comments. I think.
Well, I don't know what he meant about.
I think what he is looking for is a different way of presenting the proposed budget and different action by each, by the board in the. different action by each, by the board in the creation of that budget. But, now, I did him a disservice maybe in December by throwing him in the thing without his having gone through the process as such. And I, whomever makes up the committees for next year, I would hope that, given what Tim has learned this year, he can take a active role in how the budget is presented. Because I think, I think what he's saying would give more, more of an explanation to the public and to everybody else. And, and it brings some of the things out that are not hidden. But when we do the, when we hire an employee, then we normally discuss the position of what we're gonna do. But I'm gonna throw it right back at Tim, and I think we'll start another budget in another six months. So, if we can go that direction, go the direction you want to go, you know, the, you got it.
Let me, let me just address Deb's comments before I know there's others. In terms of not knowing what our revenues are, we actually do a better job of knowing what our revenues are. There is latitude in, in some of the numbers, but for the most part, our understanding of what our revenues are going to be are pretty forecastable. So, I would be more comfortable putting a point estimate on our revenues than on our expenses. That's point number one. Point number two is, I'm looking at a February new staff request, and I realize it's changed. I've also realized, and this is gonna sound bad, but I'll say it, I think sometimes we use the word mandate way over. I think that there are some educational needs that are, that are mandated. But I'm looking here. Library aide, secretary, custodian, instructional technology specialist, substitute driver, math support, and special education secretary additional days, and substitute teacher for reading coach. I can almost guess that none of those are state mandated. And I will, again, ask anybody, send me the mandate, the letter, that mandates any of those. That's the majority on here. In terms of who budgets the way that I'm talking about, I also talk to schools, and there are schools that are, they, they take a lot more beating from the taxpayers about not increasing taxes. And so, they actually do a top-down budget. But what I will tell you is, yeah, I think whether it's individuals or whether it's business organizations, they all do it, looking at what sort of revenues they have, and then what sort of expenditures they can have. The taxpayers are pushing back, at least at me, to the point where I'm starting to get the message, that they just don't want to be taxed anymore. And that we need to keep the expenses under our revenue.
So, when you say we have a predictable revenue, which part can you predict for next year? Which component of this can you predict as a revenue for next year that you would start to budget that?
Well, I'd predict the local sources.
Which local source?
The property taxes.
That's right. Anything else?
I could make a testament to what our state is going to be.
No, it has to be predictable.
Isn't predictable, I guess?
No, because that's what we're doing. We're guessing what you're saying. Do you know what our tax revenue is? Because I want to know, yes, one thing I know is how much income will happen from our property tax based on what we have this year. It'll be pretty close. There'll be a few things that will change perhaps, but it'll be pretty close. That's the only thing you do that is predictable. That's me. So... Well, the state revenue is the most unpredictable piece of it. That's right. I agree that local revenue is very predictable. Usually, federal revenue is fairly predictable, because it's such a small amount of the budget, it's not, it's predictable, it's gonna be next to nothing. So, really, it's, it's the state. And the state has not yet, but may in the future, in the very near future, develop a predictable and fair way to fund public schools. I'm hopeful that they will. And then I will agree with you, but plus or minus a half million dollars or so is a big deal for us. Even in an almost seventy thousand, seventy million dollar budget, it's a big deal. That's, that's all those positions, and then some. And those positions have, you know, there's, there's people in, in this room that can attest to the angst that we all go through, and, you know, isn't there any way you could live without this position? And isn't there any way you could cut ten percent more from your, your supplies or, or whatever other part of your funding of your school? And, you know, it's a long and arduous process, believe me. Our principals and our supervisors do not enjoy those meetings because they're very difficult, and we really challenge them to think of ways to save money. And I know that Ann and I would, and I think we have the best business manager of any district that I know of, and I know that she would do anything that the board wants. I don't want to speak for you, Ann, but we've talked about this before. If the board would like to see a change in the process, that is perfectly fine with us. But tell us exactly what you want us to change and how you want us to proceed, and give us more direction on that. Do you agree with me, Ann?
Absolutely. And when we had a brief conversation about how you wanted it, this is what I came up with, and that's really what I took away from our conversation, comparing fourteen, fifteen, fifteen and I made comments, you know, indicating what was, when you compare apples-to-apples, year to year, what is changing in each of these categories. If we wanted it in more detail, we can do that. And I was waiting for conversation on the staff room press. I've presented them in every presentation. And again, we keep these things in the budget because we've gone through all the processes that has said, but this is what I took away. I can only work on getting something different that will work for everyone.
And just recently, Ann came to me and said, "Do you think that we should present each new position to the board, and, you know, do you think, is that what Dr. Ture wants?" And I said, you know, and I'll be honest, I said, "You know what, Ann? At this point, it's way too late for that. This was just a few weeks ago." I said, "It's too late for that. We, we, if we wanted to do that, we should have been starting that a few months ago." And, you know, it, it, you know, in the last hour, we're already trying to advertise for these physicians and hire people. We've already made some plans because we haven't heard anything to the contrary. Uh, you know, I've seen a district that goes through a process where each supervisor, department supervisor, or, or principal, who wants additional things in their budget that haven't been in there in previous years, would come to a big budget seminar and present their requests and justification for their requests. As a principal, I, that day always made me very nervous, but I felt like I was well able, at least I had my, my chance to articulate to the school board and to the superintendent, you know, the importance of that request that I was putting forward. And I pretty much knew on that night whether that request was going to move forward, or they might say to me, "You know what, that's, that's a really important thing, and I get it, but we're gonna have to defer it another year." You know, and then you just say, "Thank you for listening to me," and you try to go back the next year. That's a process that I was familiar with in another district that's slightly different from how we do it here. And it seems to work for them, and we could do something similar to that in the future, but, you know, we, we have to get some feedback earlier in the process, rather than later in the process. Because we're just trying to do what the board wants us to do. And if we're not doing it the way the board wants, then the board has to articulate that.
And I'm just going to simply say also that my approach is the most non-micromanager approach. I don't want to necessarily sit and try to make a decision as to whether the custodian second shift relief is more important than the library aide or the secretary. My approach has, here's what our revenues are within a band, okay? And that band is less than five hundred thousand dollars, I can tell you. Here's what our revenues are, here's what our apples-to-apples expenses are, and then this is what I have left. I throw it over to the people who are in the trenches, which is Deb and her people, to make the decisions as to who they want to hire, how they want to spend those funds. That's the way that it's done.
So, what is an apple-to-apple comparison in that state?
An apple-to-apple, an apple-to-apple comparison is that when you have nineteen or two thousand and fifteen expenses, you don't add in new people, new technology services, new anything, new capital projects, and then compare the next year's forecast to something completely different the year prior.
So you would take every, you would take all the positions and all the expenses from one year and say, "That's what you're getting the next year, so you have to either deal with that or..." What? Have to have the same as the last year?
That's where you start.
Well, why would, why would you start there if you're saying that that's the restriction, that this is what we have, and we're gonna have the same next year, so this is all you have? You can't add to it. You can't change it, unless somebody leaves, or, you know, the roof caves in, so you have to build a roof. But there, if you, that's the part I just don't understand.
Apples-to-apples means that you're comparing the same situation, the same people, the same resources in one year to the next, and if there are going to be changes, there are going to be separate line items that you're going to have.
So if I'm going to, if one person is going to retire and another person's going to take their position, the person taking their position is now a line item to check to discuss?
No. Person fills a position that exists from the prior year. Careful, when you, when you...
Okay, all right, I, I'm not gonna waste your time.
No, no, I'm not gonna waste your time, but when, when you get an employment, and when you get the, the enrollment figures from Exeter, and you see what nineteen ninety-nine's enrollment was, and what two thousands enrollment was, and two thousand and fifteen, what do you assume about that enrollment, those enrollment numbers?
That they're accurate.
That they're the same schools, right? Would you be happy if you got Wilson's, Governor Mifflin's, and then Exeter's? How would you compare what the enrollment was? How do you compare whether enrollment's gone up or down? You look at a comparison from the prior year, or from the prior years. That's the way I do it.
So how many years are you gonna look?
One year.
Well, we're, we're looking level this year. And perhaps by rolling in your input into the process, we can have reduction next year. No one's fighting your, your suggestions.
Oh, and I, well, you, you, I mean, I'm not gonna get into this now, because this, this goes back too far for me, but you were there, you sat right there when I said what I said. So, I mean, I don't know, I thought it was going to be a different approach. I said it the first meeting in the meeting. So...
So then, when would you start this process then, next year? Would you start it in September? It seems like it's going to take time.
Let's start as Ann starts putting the budget together. And, and then you identify line one A, which is five thousand dollars this year, and we look at, where is the five thousand dollars gonna go? Is it enough, or is it too much? And then, any additions would have to be justified by identifying the funds, either increased revenue that we anticipate, or the reduction of that five thousand dollars for line one A to four thousand five hundred, then we've got five hundred dollars we can dedicate somewhere else or to reduction of taxes.
I think a twenty-two hundred line items, that's a lot.
I'll bet you Ann has been through those twenty-two hundred, uh, two or three times.
Would you be willing to go through those twenty-two hundred line items to reduce the taxpayers' taxes by, um...
I think that's micro...
That you would not?
No, I would not. I think that's micromanaging, and that's not what I'm doing.
And I'm gonna say that I'll go through those twenty-two hundred to reduce taxes for the people who pay the bills.
So you're gonna start in, when are you gonna start this? I like to follow this, so when would you start this process?
I would start it right now.
Jim, good sir?
Just briefly, I mean, when I'm looking at the budget this year and we're able to have no increase, that's, I'm excited about that. I don't know if we can, if we go and look at tax reduction, you know, due to the fact that certain things increase from that control. And, you know, one of the things we've been looking at over the past couple of years was, you know, we have our special ed costs that have gone up, we have our P first costs that have gone up. Fortunately, this year our healthcare was reduced to only a three percent increase, but I think that while we do have some money that is in our bank account, you don't, you don't look in and say, "Okay, let's start cutting taxes at this point," because I think that we're going to need some of those funds we have available. Even if we're able to keep ourselves at a zero this year and maybe possibly next year if you're following, I think that's good, but the thing we have to look at is, we have to make sure we have the reserves available when we have those building increases that are literally beyond our control. When I look at the budget every year, I look at and say, "Ninety, ninety-five percent of the money is already spent before we even set one." You know, just because we know we're gonna have to pay for our teachers, we're gonna have to pay for our benefits, we're gonna have to pay the terminal lights, and it's only those extra things that we decide. Do I think that the idea of going for a bottom-up idea budget is good? I personally think that would be an excellent way to be able to evaluate to see if we're being as efficient as possible. I don't think it's something you can start injecting everything, I think it's almost something you have to stretch a line first. Because it's gonna take a lot to be able to build it, all that background and understand it, to see what's going on. At the same time, as you mentioned, Tim, I don't think we want to micromanage. And, you know, if we, I always look at my management team, Dr. Moore and Dr. Deades, et cetera, to be able to come to me and say, "We need four people because..." I'm not going to question because I've already put them in that professional position to be able to understand what the needs are of our children, and to make things efficient. So, that's all.
All right.
I have come.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, that over the fourteen years of my membership of the board, I've spent a great deal of time being active in the state organizations, the Pennsylvania School Boards Association. And in the course of that, I've also taken a number of courses in best practice as far as finances. I had twenty-two years in the private sector, eleven of those years in management where I was responsible for building about eleven million dollar budget. What I, what I object to, to what takes place at these readings sometimes, whether or not you intend it that way, you seem to imply that these are not best practices. And I would just tell you that everything I see in schools and everything I see coming out of the School Boards Association as training for its members says that in fact, these are the best practices. My, my real concern, and I've been quiet on it, but my real concern is to think that we would walk the way, that we would, we would hold the line on taxes and spend down our fund balance. Every expert will tell you, every expert in school finance will tell you, that that is a mistake and a hole that you will not dig yourself out of. We need to continue responsibly, we need to continue to build program and to ensure the fact that we have quality educational programs here. We're not gonna, you know what, and we're not gonna do it, we're just not gonna do it with a ghost staff or expecting people... to do it with a ghost staff or expecting people to do more than what they can do. And I, I, I think it's a mistake for this board to continue those discussions about our fund balance and about the kinds of things that we're talking about, cutting and being concerned about here. We need to make sure, we need to keep our eye on the ball, and the ball is what's best for the kids and what's best for the program. And I don't want to see us turn away from that. I think that we are able to do what we're doing because we've been fiscally responsible. If you look around Berks County, I think the Exeter School District is probably in as good of financial condition as any one of the other school districts in this county, and it's because of the business managers and the history of the business managers and the history of us using best practices. We need to continue to do that.
I'm not saying, I don't think anyone's suggesting we don't rush.
But I think, but I think holding the line on tax, or on taxes by spending down fund balance is a bad practice.
And we haven't suggested that, but-
Yeah, I think we have.
All we're talking about now is identifying, do we need X number of dollars in that fund balance? Do we need that? Do we need $5,000 in line 1A or 11A? And I don't see any problem with that, I've gone through budgets, 2,200, 3,000, we don't. It's, it's not too much for the taxpayer to expect us to review it. We've used a different method of coming to a budget for, it varies from year to year. And it's been consistent for the last few years, but we've changed it before, and if we, if the business committee can come up with a way that makes it clear and more understandable, I don't see a problem with that. It's just working in and making the budget. And no one individual is going to change anything. That's why there's nine of us. You know, Tim and I, Tim may want to spend all of that 8% balance, and I'm not saying he does, because I don't believe he does, but, you know, he's a spend-thrifter, but, uh, you know, that, he can't spend any of it. I can't spend any of it, you can't spend any of it. It takes the nine of us, or at least five out of the nine, to do anything. So if we want to come, if Tim is, with his expertise, wants to work with Ann and come up with a different way of presenting the budget that makes it clear to us, I don't see a problem with that.
For us to maintain status quo, it will cost more, yeah, for us to maintain status quo, it will cost more next year.
That's correct.
Think about the possibility of a reduction of revenue and maintaining status quo. It doesn't go together.
We have, nobody wants to maintain status quo.
Well, he wants to roll back taxes.
So, that's not a direct line. If we, if we use the money, if we identify the money to do the changes we want to do, then, then that's, it's done. And there's nothing wrong with looking closer at what's going on. Is there?
I just think what we're talking about is impossible. There's only one way you're going to hold it long, and that's to spend that fund. And I've seen school districts do it, and they've started-
Redding did it for years, that's why Redding's in a situation like that. Yeah, and Exeter has none, and there's always nine people that just make the decision, not one, well, there's five. Five make the decision. I think it's a good recommendation, and I would ask you, Darrell, to make the changes so that it meets your criteria. If it's not understandable to the rest of it, then we'll change it too. But I think we, as of right now, we have said no, no raising taxes. If we can work for a reduction and still meet our criteria for education, then that would be delightful too. But we won't do it for this budget. Is there any further comments?
I just want to ask Ann, this is the first time in how many years that we will not be raising taxes?
Well, I only went back about 15 years.
So we've been raising taxes ever, in the past 15 years, every year?
If you look at our growth-
My son, yes.
Okay. Right. If you look at where our growth has come, it's come in the last 15 years.
But I, I remember, I will say one thing, it is very important for us to have a quality education here for the students, and, and I don't know who talks to you, Mr. Comer, it might be senior citizens, and I understand they're quite, I have maybe one myself. However, I think if we talk to people that send their children here to the Exeter School District, I think they, they are very, very happy with the district because they see that their children are getting a, a very good education. And if, if you look at the end-of-the-year results, you know, for, for our students, they have done well in many, many areas, and that does cost money to hire professionals that can work so well with the children that are trusting them. So I, I think when you have a good school district, young people will come to it because they want their children to get a very good education, a very good education in this data world of ours.
Knowing that it costs money does not relieve us of responsibility, I'm sure that we do not spend more than we have to.
I agree 100%.
That's all it is to me.
I agree 100% with you, yeah.
If Tim can come up with a better way of doing this process, that we know that we're not wasting any, then I'm all in.
I don't want to waste any money either.
We can, if we move on.
Did you just, can we catch this?
Okay. If there's no other questions, comments, we can move on to, next, leave the adoption minutes. Minutes are on your computer system here. Does anyone have any changes to it right now?
So there was a change, what was the change that you made in the minutes?
That we discussed?
Yeah. I know there was a change in the minutes, I remember that, and I felt like there was a correction in the minutes.
The amounts for the service budget hadn't, hadn't been updated.
I, I, I moved it-
We're not moving on, we're just-
Oh, oh, this is, that's workshop me, I'm sorry, the workshop.
Next week, we, any changes we will allow. We also have three policies. I have a question on your 4A policy, the administrative employees. Would you define administrative employees? I could always consider administrators as secretaries and also non, to include the non-certificated people. And I, when I read that policy, it's defining educators as certificate individuals, and I wonder if more of the administrators, that should be in there.
That, that they should hold a certificate?
I guess I have similar concern about that. Why are we just addressing certificated employees, why, why some, or educators, actually? Why, why don't we have a policy that says all district employees?
See, for the, that first one, it says a section administrative employees, and then it's called educator misconduct, and I, my question was, this extends beyond just the educators, which we have defined as a person who holds a script.
These policies, Dr. Weber is in here this evening, she had another comment, but these policies specifically address changes in the law regarding educators, and educators do hold certifications as educators. So I'm assuming that's why it's, it's so limited because of the law.
My question is why, you know, why would it not apply to any sector or anything like that? And when we consider-
All school, all school employees.
Yeah, that's my question.
Would we be required by laws to report misconduct of all school employees at the Department of Education?
Yes.
Is that something we are part of?
Yes.
Yes, that's why I noticed too, it doesn't include non-certificated staff, it doesn't even include, say, uh-
Like teacher aides or something, yeah.
And coaches.
He's supposed to be-
Or assistant coaches.
Okay, I'll, I'll find out. Mr. Malzey has already looked over, and basically, these are almost verbatim from the PSBA's recommended policies in relation to these new codes. So, but I, but I have a question.
Do you know how we have policies for two percent?
Yes, we have the same, similar policy for another class of employees and then another to cover.
We got two of them right here, one of them's for professional employees, one's for new street.
And the 500 series would be for-
For support staff and so forth.
Non-instructional workers.
Yeah.
So maybe that's-
And maybe that's, maybe that's what's coming, yeah, yeah, that's a good question.
Another point I'd ask, these, both these policies on misconduct protect the district and anyone who's reporting from civil liability, but it doesn't say anything about retaliation of the school district. So, you can see, yeah, I would like to have something that the employees feel comfortable doing the reporting without feeling or being threatened that they could lose their jobs or another way they retaliate against.
Well, I certainly have no problem putting that in because I think, you know, that's a given, that, you know, that's, that's the way we do business, we certainly never hide anything, but, um-
No, and I'm not putting that in from administrator point of view, because I, I agree with you.
No, I understand, but even some of the-
But I'm saying communicating to the employees that, that they know.
Okay, I think, I don't think that would change, that would be against the law if we would add that in for all the board.
Any further comments on policies?
Now, the suicide awareness, I, I can see the point where this is dragged it toward youth suicide, but in our district, I mean, we've had some unfortunate instances where our own employees, you know, took their life.
Um, again, we could add in whatever we would choose, the law only covers the students.
Yeah.
So if we would choose to add employees or other people associated with the Exeter Township School District, we can certainly do that.
Well, let's say, school community, I would think of that being anyone who is involved in Exeter Township School District, pretty much. Maybe there's more language in here, has to be added further down.
I'll give John a call, and I don't think there should be any problem with adding those, that's why this is the first reading to get something.
This is functional. Okay, next week, it's going to be recommended under 5A that the Board of School Directors approves budget transfers for the month of May 2015 in the amount of $1,697,344. Under B, it's going to be recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the art supply bid, or awards the art supply bid to the lowest responsible bidder. Award is made by individual item. Art supply bid will be provided for the voting meeting on June 16. Under 5C, it's going to be recommended the Board of School Directors awards the athletic supply equipment bid to the lowest responsible bidders. Award is again made on an individual item basis. Athletic supply and equipment bid list will be provided for the voting meeting on June 16. Under 5D, it's going to be recommended that the Board of School Directors approves a property tax refund at Carl Snyder of 205 Ford Road in Redding in the amount of $195.30 for the 2014 school real estate taxes paid. The fund represents homestead, farmstead property re-tax deduction that the property was eligible to receive, but due to an error made by the accounting assessment office, did not reflect the reduction. Under E, it is going to be recommended that the Board approves the following insurance coverages for the July 1st to June 30th, 216 period. I will read all those, but property liability, auto, umbrella, school leader errors and omissions, and workers comp. It says, in total, the cost for the lines of insurance coverage listed above is $366,439 or $28,529 less than in the current year.
Excuse me, Tim, the business auto coverage, is that for buses or is that just for other district vehicles?
All of them.
I'm just out of curiosity, for workers comp, do we know what we've picked out so far this year in workers comp?
About 100 for, under the deductible, we have a $5,000 deductible, so we will, I can get you that information, if you want the total.
There was a lot of, I guess maybe quantify there are a lot of workers comp names that you can get in the issue.
There's a lot of things that are reported, but maybe there's no ones that actually come through medical pause.
Yeah.
I can get you, uh-
I was curious if it was, saw a lot of them or a little of them. I thought, I remember Betty at one point saying that there was an improvement in our experience.
Right, the experience modifier went from 1.5 down to 1.1, so we dropped some bad years and had some good years, yeah.
It's not, it's not the number of them so much as, if you have a couple of really expensive ones, that's what we've had in the past that have really hurt us.
Well, in, I guess it was about three years ago, we hired the assistant for Ken for a lot of the motion prevention type information, what he experienced. Do you feel that that's benefited us?
That has benefited us, yes, definitely. It's been very, very helpful. And he is on the, on the safety committee, which Dr. Weber runs, and we get input from a variety of staff members about safety issues, hazards, problems that we've seen in various schools and foundations and so forth. It's very helpful. We've made a lot of changes over the past few years that have helped us, and we've been very aggressive in documentation of incidents and so forth, even if the person says, oh, I'm fine, I'm fine, you know, I don't want to fill out a form, and we've been, we've been recording those, and that actually helps us.
And return to work also.
Yeah, and, yeah, that's right, the return to work.
Duty.
Yeah, it kind of discourages people from, you know, sort of prolonging something when they know they have to come back to work even if their duties are going to be lighter and, and different. So that's, that's been very helpful.
Ann, I just have a question about the budget transfers. It seems like quite a large amount, $1,697,344. Can you tell me why we budgeted one place at one time and now we have to transfer to something else, that, I mean, it's a big amount of budget.
One of them is a housekeeping, we're moving payments for the note, and it's a housekeeping going from an object 9/11 to 9/12, 831 versus 832, it's just an accounting thing. We pay a bond principal, bond interest, it goes into one object, but if it's a note, it goes into another object, so that's part of it. But the other part of the significant amount of transfers is if we're going to transfer $800,000 this year of that interest savings to capital reserve, we would have to move money from accounts to, to that transfer account.
I was wondering if that was-
There's a specific accounting that's used to transfer funds.
Like, wasn't it from some kind of math thing, math moves or something like that?
Oh, except for the lease of the one-to-one equipment, some of it came from the general fund within the math textbook account. I think it was at the bottom of page two.
Right, that's exactly right, yeah, I'm looking at it now, trying to see the numbers. Where the first lease came in is this month, so really we're using those funds where there was available funds in the budget to pay that. 448 is the lease rental object code, and we're just moving money from other supply amount materials which weren't used this season.
Under 5F, it is going to be recommended that the Board of School Directors approves food service, lunch price rate increases for the 2015-16 year per attached schedule.
I'd like to comment on that. I understand just increasing the prices by a nickel for the students, and we want to maximize participation, but I think when it comes down to the adult meals, those prices are higher, so it's not a, rather increase the adult meals by a dime, by 10 cents. They're costing more, so percentage-wise, 10 cents isn't very significant percentage. I mean, if the Board agrees, but...
Any thoughts on that?
Well, I think maybe with regards to prices for adults, for simple change, maybe if it's possible, just don't cut around numbers, instead of 390 or 380, just make it $4. 350 is a nice round number. You know, I mean, it's less change, it just makes sense and logical. Quarters are better than pennies and nickels and dimes. You know, and we're already at a loss, so, you know, I probably would have rounded everything up to a solid quarter number. That's just like, way over.
Do the students have, are these student meals or these...
We're looking at adult.
End sales.
I understand, I'm looking.
Well, students could go, if you give a dollar, $2.95 to $3, the kid's probably getting only $3 at the end of that point, and the nickel probably got lost on the way home.
Most of it's by card access.
Yeah.
So, this, these are good staff, and these are good staff.
They still carry cash around for the extra stuff.
Good stuff.
Yeah, the good stuff.
Adult meals are for staff?
Yes.
So, is there any objection to raising the adults a dime?
How many, how many adult meals do we think we serve?
I don't think it's a lot.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I don't think this is...
Adult sales are around 20,000 per year.
Oh, okay, that's good. How do I, if they were canceling me, would they get raised all they want?
Okay, under 5G, it's going to be recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the proposed final budget for the food service department for the 2015-16 school year, with revenue of $1,724,975, expenditures of $1,831,310, and a net loss of $106,335. Budget includes payment of $81,000 of the general fund for utilities, insurance, and other district-provided services. There's no change since the proposed budget was adopted on May 18th, and you can also see attached file.
Now, I think the service, the budget for food has been in the red, I think, since I moved in more. It does, Mrs., Mrs. Clay, I don't know.
Mrs. Clay.
Does she ever look over, or does anybody ever go over with her, maybe how she can either cut costs or raise prices effectively, because, I don't know.
I remember explaining this last year, Pat. We are subsidizing the students. We do not want to charge the students anymore for lunch, so we're taking Mrs. Clay's million-dollar fund balance, and we're slowly bleeding it down by subsidizing the students' lunch prices. But that's why there is a loss of $106,000, $116,000. It is intentional so that these students are getting the money back that their parents or that they paid previous year in profits. So, it's an intentional subsidizing of, you know, Gloria knows exactly what she's doing, believe me.
Did you run the tight ship?
Yeah.
A very tight ship.
You're not going to find anyone more cruelest than Mrs. Clay.
Well, I was disappointed in how she said how much food was wasted by the students. Now, to me, I mean, I just think maybe, I don't know, maybe, maybe this food doesn't taste right to the students. I don't know, I don't know what the problem is.
It's a picking.
Or, you know, then why would they, why would they just pack lunch? You know what I'm saying? I think it's, I think we have to look into that, because, I don't know, maybe I'll go and get a few lunches there and see how I like them, but, you know, there's something wrong with 40% of the food wasted. But, I mean, that was her comment, not mine. I mean, I have a hard time, you know, 40% is a lot to waste of food.
It's consistent across the United States.
I don't think so, Dr. Martin.
Well, I do, I do. As someone who stood in for many years in a cafeteria watching kids dump the food in the trash, I totally agree with the 40%.
If we were still using silverware instead of plastic silverware, we could go to the dump and retrieve a year's worth of silverware every year.
It makes you feel any different, Pat. Mrs. Clay actually did, when she was changing the menu, continues to do this, but she runs test, or survey, test surveys, you know, and to have kids taste it and have to give their opinion and choose between things, and they participated. So, it's not that it was totally, it's not...
It's gotten more healthy over the past years. That doesn't run well with kids.
And I think what's happened too is that's what's driven the price up.
Yeah.
It's gotten more healthy, it has created what's desired.
Maybe we should...
You know, we could do away with any loss while you're just going back to selling tasty foods. Make that money back, that Pepsi.
They don't want vegetables.
Well, maybe, I mean, there should be something, I would hope that we should try to help to reduce the 40% loss of food, you know, from their play. That's 60%, that's not, they're not eating a healthy meal, and, but maybe somehow in health class or something, or she could go into this, I mean, something needs to be done, because that is a lot of ways to be...
Okay, under 5H, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the proposed final budget for the Capital Projects Fund, importantly excluding the Walton Creek Project Fund for the 2015-16 school year, with revenue of $9,000, expenditures of $116,166, and a fund balance as of June 30th, 16, of $6,874,765. There's no change since the proposed budget was adopted on May 18th, 2015, and again, you can see the attached file. Under 5I, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the renewal of contract with ParentLink for the period of one year to provide messaging applications to the district at a cost of $195 per unit, plus an annual subscription fee of $1,000, for a total of $9,190 for fiscal year 15-16. This is the same cost as in the current year. Under J, it's going to be recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the Johnson Control Annual Service Agreement for the period 7/1/15 through June 30th of 16, in the amount of $48,120. The contract amount is 3% higher than the current year premium of $46,719. And finally, under 5K, it is recommended that the Board of Directors award the Lorraine Elementary paving project to the lowest responsible bidder. It will be open on June 11th, 2015.
Thank you, sir. Director, personal.
I just want to ask, with the, Anne, do you know if they'll have the project done before school starts? And what's for the Lorraine students?
Yes.
Number six, personnel. Part A, we have a retirement support staff, Christopher R. Lee. Part B is resignations of support staff. Part C, we have appointments of certificated staff, substitute teachers, support staff, and extracurricular staff. Part D, we have levers of absence as noted for certificated staff and support staff. Part E, we have a change of status of certificated staff and support staff. Part SF is approval of summer school personnel. Part G is special education extended school year program of personnel to support that. Part H are extended contracts, as noted in the attachment. And part I are staff conferences, 1 through 13.
Any questions or comments from Director? Discussions.
I just have a question, in 10, for, I guess, support staff, Cindy Fox, and she's going to, has a very important leadership conference. Why did she need your board approval for that?
We put them all on the agenda, we always have.
I mean, would she need board approval for that?
Just that she's going to be away from her duties.
It's not her normal duties and potentially be covered by medical insurance, so she needs specific authority to do so.
But, you're right, there's no cost to the district.
There's no cost to the district, and it's going for her time off. That's why she works all year. She works all year?
Hmm.
Oh, does she? Oh, I didn't realize that.
She's secretary in the junior high school.
Oh, oh, I didn't know, I didn't wish to. I'm sorry.
Student functions, Mr. Kurt.
Yeah. 7A is really nice, the graduation rate, I'm sure you can talk about. Item B, it's a rec, approving agreement, EPF, therapy and service, and... Item C is approving tuition agreement, complete over 30, academy, school, for secondary students. Item D, it's a thing of tuition free, college, education, service, and...
Is that a good question, really? Are these organizations that are for private, that are chartering? Are you being fair, officially or unofficially?
Yeah, yeah, unofficial, or officially, they're, they're nonprofit, I guess, most of them, but... Some are private though, aren't they? Some of them are. It's a variety. We, a pre-private school are, will, probably be nonprofit. I can't answer about pediatric care, pediatric service contract, I would assume that they probably will.
So, that gets $7,500 bucks.
These are extended school year, yeah, for our special needs students who are placed in those placements, and if the students qualify for extended school year services over the summer, that bill comes to us, and we have no choice about it.
We must in there too?
Per me?
We must in there, or it's one of them.
We have to provide transportation, yes.
And those are mandated.
Was that?
And those are mandated.
Yeah, no, I know, I just...
Yeah. Now, we brought a big ESY program within the district for kids that we serve in the district, so, in that we also provide transportation to the...
Now, Valley Forge and Deveraux, they are two of the pre-private schools, which we have 40, 10 students. ESY is not being versed through that program, the 64 is split, you have to pay all of them.
Now, the C agreement, it says, June 23rd through August 5th. Now, is it, and then it's, and it's certified, I guess, person, is it five days a week, they attend, or seven days a week, or how, how does that work?
It's five, it's not, it's not seven.
And then we bus them down, or how, how does that go, do they go back to work, or they stay down there?
No, they go back before.
They go back, so, do you get the bus, and you do the buses?
Yep, if we can, yeah.
And it's 365 days, you know, $65 per day?
Sometimes, sometimes it's cheaper to pay the parent to do it, and that's an option. Sometimes it's cheaper to put it in a text, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a matter of looking at where the student has to be transported to, but we have to provide the transportation.
Oh, we have to provide... Where is 650?
Which one?
Hogan.
Yeah, Hogan's the one, Fleetwood, I think.
Oh, in Fleetwood.
Yeah.
For severely autistic students.
This is a fairly high price for your $650 per day.
Mr. Kurt.
Item B, the tuition for the, to the general foundation, it would be the student's thing. Item F, we agree between the district and the Care and Foundation to provide student assistance program. What do you want us to do, to the senior high school, junior high school by 15, for the August 1st, 2015 to June 20, 2016, and plus $38,300. And I'd ask Dr. Martin if we could have someone from the Care and Foundation come talk to us, it's been a while since I've been here, to talk to us about the clients that they serve, and sort of give us a sense about what's going on in the school. If admission is starting now for drug, drug alcohol, but they see a lot of other students as well, so...
A lot of the referrals are now, now health referrals, and they diagnose and work with both.
You know what else is, they're extremely, extremely helpful if we have a crisis like a death of a student that we experienced this year, or, or any other sort of sudden event that requires a lot of counseling and so forth, they're very, very helpful and helping. Bill?
The other function that they serve very well is essentially adds on to various...
Organizations, yeah.
To find services for kids.
Yeah.
They have a lot of great contacts.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's amazing how diverse they are, actually. It also gives us a sense of what's going on for school population, and at least it did when they were here before I got that out of it, and said, I was surprised that just some of the things that were happening in the school district, that would have never been...
And I do recall what you had said that when she had come to speak with us, to speak with the Board several years ago, I'm not sure exactly how many years ago it was, but it was while I was here, and I'm sure she'd be willing to do that again, so we can arrange that.
Item G, we'll be approving and accepting an agreement on admission disciplinary violence as stated in the specific statement. And that's it.
Director, any questions of...
Yeah, I just wanted to ask about the Care and Foundation. Was it their schedule last year also? Had they also gone down into the writing school, or is, are they...
Or is there, are they now going down into the right fit?
About three or four years ago, there was a grant that Karen got from Partep, which totally paid the four hours that a person would get right, and that grant dried up. And the last two years, we've been paying for the four hours. So is this the third or fourth year that you've had someone for four hours?
I want to say it's the third. They do drug and alcohol groups, children reprimand, there's all kinds of things, but it's, it's just, it's fantastic for our students. We've had a lot of compliments from parents. It's really helped our children.
Do they do it on an individual basis, or do they do it like a group self?
Some are individual, but there are many groups.
Yeah.
I don't know how long they were down there, I don't know if they're going to come back yet.
Thank you, Mrs. Ketchum, Mr. Dusik.
It will be recommended that the Board of School Directors will approve the purchase of the following textbook for the two thousand fifteen two thousand sixteen school year, Foundation of Economics, an advanced placement book with a copyright of two thousand and fifteen, published by Pearson. That's all I know.
Thanks, sir.
Can I, can I introduce another topic?
Would you have anything you'd like the Institute to say?
Since I don't have a formal report this evening, I just wanted to talk about an opportunity that the district has that I'm hoping that the Board will allow us to explore a little bit more about sometime in May, maybe a little bit before then. I spoke with the director, the executive director of the VCIU about a plan to, VCIU to partner with some districts to seek some funding through the preschool counts grant, which has been around for a while, but we have not qualified to apply for on our own. And I know Pat's a big advocate of preschool education, and so are many of us. And, you know, we see the kids when they get to kindergarten, and we realize that if they had gone to a good preschool, you know, they would have been better prepared and supported. Not all of them can afford to do that. So we were approached about partnering with the VCIU as part of a consortium to apply for a grant through preschool counts. The IU would do all of the work in this case. We'd do the application, we would just sign on to join them in this application, and they would administer the grant. There would be no cost to the district, but they would, in the districts that partnered with them, they would put one or two classes of qualifying four-year-olds by qualifying mainly economically disadvantaged students who would not have the opportunity to attend preschool without this grant. And we could invite them to join, like I said, one or two classes, so we might have a lot more kids that qualify than who could actually participate, but at least it would be a start. The IU would provide a teacher and an aide for each class and any other services that might be needed. We would provide the space, and we've identified two classrooms at Watten Creek. Mrs. Cook is very much, all of our elementary principals are very much interested, as Mrs. Clay is, as well as our reading supervisor. And it, all we're saying is that we would like to at least explore this. Now, the money isn't really there right now, it's all dependent on state budget, and who knows if we do go forward with it, whether we would even fund it and all. So it's all just an exploratory thing to, to say, yes, if you get some money and you could provide a teacher and an aide, and, you know, you would use Exeter students, not just from Watten Creek, but from across the district, who are qualifying four-year-olds, and give them an opportunity with a good curriculum, solid curriculum, and give them a good foundation before they attend kindergarten, that we would like to buy into that. What the district would be providing, as I said, was the space, custodial services, you know, heat and electric and all that stuff, and at no cost, no additional cost to the IU, because they're serving our students, and things like allowing the teachers to use the copier, also nursing services if the kids are sick or need medicine or whatever, any of the children. But it would be a really great opportunity for us to not have to add anything to our budget and to be able to serve a preschool population if it would come through. Again, it's all exploratory, we're just going to give it a shot. If the Board is in agreement, I will, next week in the agenda, formally ask permission to join the VCIU in applying for a preschool counts grant.
You said it would only be our students in there?
It would only be our students.
Okay, and just another question, then. I assume that all the IU's expenses would be covered by the grant?
All the IU's, yeah. So they, they apply for the grant...
But our expenses would not, the space and all that stuff would not entitle us to a financial piece of that?
No, no, it would not. It would not. But it would cover the expenses for the personnel. If the teachers sick, they get the substitute, all of that. We have no administrative overhead or anything like that to do with it. Mrs. Cook, is there anything you wanted to add or any of the other principals?
I think you pretty much covered it.
Okay. And I got a sample of what would be a lease agreement. I had asked Mrs. Cook to try and get a copy of one, I shared that with Mrs. Guidish. They carry their own insurance, they would carry their own insurance and so forth, and, you know, I don't really see, transportation would be totally provided by the parent. My only concern is that, and that is that we may be eliminating some students who may not be able to get here, but, you know, it's a start anyway, and they've had other preschool counts classes that, you know, the parents are required to provide the transportation, and it's not been a problem. Parents are very grateful for the opportunity for their kids, and they're happy to drive their kids to school and pick them up.
I think, also, I think there's lots of community, and once we get it in place, that some of those issues could be tweaked out at some point.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, not only having done this, I don't know what it's going to be like, but we have some parameters that I am comfortable with. And in talking to Anne today, she didn't see a downside to it. I know that our principals, just as they've seen full-day kindergarten as a great benefit over the years, would see some preschool preparation. You know, I'm sure your kindergarten teachers would tell you the difference between a kid that has gone through a preschool program and a kid who has not gone through a preschool program, and their first school experience is the first day in kindergarten. And there is a vast difference, especially with the high expectations that we have now for children in kindergarten.
And we did decide to go with full day?
Full day, yeah. We have choice of full or half day. We'd like to do full day and maximize our opportunities with the students and flex of data.
Does anyone have any objections to looking into educating these at work?
No. I think that's a great idea. Is it going to be five days a week then?
It would follow our calendar, and they have the same requirements that we do in terms of one hundred and eighty school days and...
That should be, that would be great.
I'm sure we'll have to have nap time, maybe I'll come join them.
Five days a week? Full day? It's torture to a four-year-old. It's torture to a fifty-year-old.
Oh. That's why we don't have fifty-year-olds in our classrooms.
We also had a letter or a note from the President of the Exeter Township Educators Association thanking us for the snacks we provided in honor of Future Appreciation Week. Does anyone else have anything to bring before the work?
I just want to make a comment and congratulate Mr. Kane and his team, and certainly Dr. Martin and your team, that I thought, once again, just another wonderful graduation, and, you know, a great venue and just very well, you know, just very well organized, and just came up really nice. The kids were great.
Yeah.
I'd like to thank everybody that was there. Nothing else? We'll see you next week.